...and pollution.
Get out of the car, look around the city, take a trip on the train, the bus, go all over the place. It's a lot to see here.
Now to do this, schools must book their trip at least three weeks in advance. No more than 40 people per party. You can log on to Metro's website to register. Outside Chinatown's Metro Station, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Other free field trip destinations include Mocha, the Natural History Museum, and the Long Beach Aquarium of the Pacific. To register your class, log on to metro.net/ridesafely. The program is good for first to 12th graders throughout LA County. And on those field trips, students learn the city of Los Angeles is full of history, from monuments and buildings to theaters and parks. But there are many places in the city that have historical significance but haven't yet been designated as historic. Yana Kay tells us about the process that can change all that.
Sitting on 67 acres, this modern Baldwin Hills condo village, known as Village Green, features a unique combination of site planning and architectural design. Village Green is one of many sites that have National Historic Landmark status.
The separation of the automobile from the pedestrian and having expansive open space and a park-like setting in a residential environment. So Village Green is a wonderful example for today because it's already designated historic at every level.
The city of Los Angeles has 29 historic districts with more than 1,000 city landmarks like City Hall, the Dunbar Hotel, Union Station, and many others. In order to identify and nominate other historic resources, the California Preservation Foundation, an advocacy and education organization, recently held a workshop on the city of LA's historic preservation programs.
Today's workshop is to learn about the national register, state register, local register. What are the differences, as well as what are the processes for each? To help local advocates, consultants, as well as other cities, learn about these different processes.
Officials say because of the city's many historical landmarks, such as the LA Theater, the Tower and Palace Theater in downtown LA, and the Watts Towers, the city's program serves as a model for other local government programs.
The city of LA is a great partner. We work with them to actually do a lot of education. We had a recent webinar that we put on with the city of LA.
Los Angeles also had one of the first local historic designation programs of any big city in the country. In 2012, the city will celebrate the 50th anniversary of the original Cultural Heritage Ordinance passed in 1962. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
The next California Preservation Foundation workshop will be held April 4th in Pasadena. And one building with historical significance that that is in danger of being tampered with is the Venice Post Office. Residents there are rallying together to prevent the planned shutdown of the post office, and in their corner is Councilman Bill Rosendahl. The US Postal Service has decided to close and sell the Venice Post Office and relocate customer services to the Venice Postal Annex, a sorting and carrier storage facility just across the street. Venice area residents have a different idea.
Keep the postal services here, and our preference is that they sell that. And get this industrial, commercial use out of a residential neighborhood. And move the Venice barriers from over there over here.
At stake, residents say, is the historic 1939 structure that houses the Venice Post Office located at 1601 Main Street.
It was built during the Depression. It's a WPA project. So people were put to work to serve and to build a building that serves the people. And now they're trying to take it away from the people.
I come here all the time. It's a beautiful building. It's reminiscent of the history of the community. It's a beautiful gathering place. And they, you know, why move it? It's the center of town and it's a great place.
The cause also has the support of Councilman Bill Rosendahl.
This is the last post office before you hit the ocean in continental United States. And don't throw it in the ocean.
Residents also want to preserve the Story of Venice mural on the wall of the post office lobby, one of only two that remain by noted artist Edward Bieberman.
The history in this city of destroying art is not a very good history. I mean, going back to the Cicadas mural on Alvera Street that was destroyed. And now that this mural here, which is a very important mural by a very important artist named Edward Bieberman, is also part of this legacy, it's time to stop it.
At the heart of this community effort is the belief that some things or institutions are sacred.
We want the post office to continue and to survive. There are some things you can't email.
Those organizing the effort to stop the Venice Post Office from relocating are asking residents to write to Senators Barbara Boxer and Dianne Feinstein to get them to intervene. Downtown Los Angeles welcomes yet another new business to its growing roster of new businesses. Its newest resident is bringing denim, bright colors, and American flair to the Arts District. Here's Cindy San Luis.
Everything that bears the Lucky Brand label has the essence, the feel of it, of LA.
The Lucky Brand Company is now headquartered at 540 South Santa Fe Avenue.
Three, two, one.
This 46,200 square foot facility brings 250 jobs to the downtown Los Angeles Arts District and will house Lucky Brand's executive offices, merchandising, creative services, and public relations teams. Lucky Brand began crafting their signature vintage-inspired jeans in 1990, quickly earning the title of America's favorite. In 1999, the brand, which became a subsidiary of Liz Claiborne, now called Fifth and Pacific Companies, also produces apparel, shoes, accessories, and jewelry for men and women that are sold throughout the United States, as well as at select locations in Canada and Europe.
It was a dream that was February of 2010 to today, and we're standing here at our building today, and we're very proud of that.
You know, we talk in business about location, location, location.
Lucky Brand moved from its prior location in the city of Vernon...
This is a bandana pit that we do in the stores.
...to working closely with the city of Los Angeles under the New Development Services Case Management Office, which walks businesses of all sizes through the development process. In the past, companies were forced to contact individuals at seven different city departments. And as a token of appreciation, the company presented the mayor with his own pair of Lucky jeans. From the Lucky Brand headquarters in the downtown Los Angeles Arts District, I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week.
Lucky Brand's decision to relocate jobs to the city of Los Angeles follows similar moves by Google, Coda, and Belkin. Some Lucky students at John Muir Middle School got to see the world-famous Harlem Globetrotters in action as they took on the LAPD officers in a friendly game of hoops. Yana Kay has more.
Harlem Globetrotter superstar TNT Maddox is showing off her skills and entertaining the students at John Muir Middle School. As the first female Globetrotter in 19 years, she says it's important for her to connect with kids, especially young girls.
I've always tried to encourage young ladies. But now, not only do I get to tell them, I get to show them every night when I put on a Globetrotter uniform that, hey, we can do anything we put our minds to.
Maddox and her teammate Big Easy Lofton teamed up with members of the LAPD basketball team to promote and teach the kids the importance of character through the organization's Cheer Program, which stands for Cooperation, Healthy Mind and Body, Effort, Enthusiasm, and Responsibility.
It means a lot, you know, because I'm from New Orleans. I was born and raised in New Orleans, and I went to a school similar to this. You know, we didn't have nobody coming in, you know, talking to us in terms of something positive, teaching this character, teaching the safety, you know, in conjunction with the police. So it's good to do it. It's excellent for me. I love it.
Eight LAPD basketball players, along with TNT and Big Easy, face off on the court with a friendly shootout. Not only do the students get a chance to see the Globetrotters in action, but they're also getting a chance to see an actual game. Officials here passed out 300 tickets to students to see a game in Los Angeles. Los Angeles Police Chief Charlie Beck says events like these help to build camaraderie between the officers and the kids, and help teach the kids the value of teamwork.
An interaction with the Globetrotters and with the kids in Los Angeles, there doesn't get better than that.
In addition to getting tickets for the game, the kids also went home with a few new tricks up their sleeves. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
The Harlem Globetrotters are currently on their 2012 World Tour. Two council members are threatening to file a lawsuit concerning the city's redistricting proposal. We'll tell you about another item you can add to your recycling bin, and your input is needed to help the city improve on city services. These stories and more in City Beat. Councilmembers Bernard Parks and Jam Perry have sent a joint letter to Redistricting Commission Chair Arturo Vargas and City Attorney Carmen Tru Tannage alleging that the process for drawing the city's council boundaries was flawed and possibly even illegal. The letter was sent prior to the commission finalizing its proposed map to send to the city council for debate. Perry and Parks's letter accuses the commission of trying to move black voters out of Parks's majority-black South LA district while turning Perry's district south of downtown into a majority Latino district. Parks and Perry have threatened to file a lawsuit challenging the maps if the existing recommendations are approved. An update on a story we brought you last week on truancy. The LA City Council has unanimously voted to significantly reduce the base fine for skipping or being late to school from $250 to $20 for a third offense. The plan introduced by Councilman Tony Cardenas now allows first- or second-time offenders to either perform community service or attend an after-school program. Those against the former truancy policy argue that a hefty fine does not encourage youths to stay in school. Los Angeles residents can now recycle CDs and DVDs in the recycling bin. Although they're a computer-related item, they are not electronic waste. The disc itself is made of recyclable materials, so just separate the discs and any paper labels from the jewel cases. If the discs have any personal information on them, either reformat them or deeply scratch the surface of the discs before placing them in the recycling bin. And recycling is just one of many city services the city is hoping to improve upon. That's why it's seeking feedback from all residents of Los Angeles on the quality and efficiency of city services like recycling and street services. This survey is an opportunity for all community members and businesses to have their voices heard. The City Controller's Office will be collecting survey data over the next several months, and will use it to compile ideas and make recommendations on making Los Angeles more efficient. To take the online survey, visit surveymonkey.com/s/LAControllerSurvey. Cherry blossoms in our nation's capital have long been a symbol of the friendship between the US and Japan. Now, the city of LA has planted its own friendship grove of cherry blossoms to help cement relations with its own sister city of Nagoya, Japan, and to mark a special anniversary. Here's Anna Marcos.
Cherry blossoms blooming could soon become an annual springtime tradition here in LA. Councilmember Tom Labonge and community members planted the last of a dozen cherry trees at Griffith Park to honor a special occasion for both Japan and the US, the 100-year anniversary of the cherry blossom trees which have become so famous in Washington, DC.
100 years ago, and I just learned this right today. It was a gift for the people of Japan to the United States, 3,000 cherry blossom trees. And now it's a festival, and not just in our own nation's capital, which is the most famous spot, but throughout the world.
The trees here at Griffith Park also symbolize the friendship between LA and its sister city of Nagoya, Japan. They were donated by the LA Nagoya Sister City Affiliation and Huntington Library, a botanical garden and museum near LA.
These grow the best in this climate. They're the healthiest, and they are commemorative to what was planted 100 years ago also.
So they're hybrids?
Yes, they are.
As soon as a year from now, visitors to this area of Griffith Park will see the blossoming of the cherry trees. In fact, this young tree just planted already has blossoms on it.
Especially during the spring, early spring, in February or March, when the cherry blossoms are in full bloom, it will create a beauty to symbolize the beauty of the relationship between Japan and the United States.
Washington, DC expects some competition. LA just might one day have its own annual cherry blossom festival. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Los Angeles and Nagoya, Japan have been sister cities since 1959. A community activist who passed away in 2009 is remembered for her eye for beauty and for her public service. Now, the city is memorializing her by dedicating a corner of her community in her name. From here on out, the intersection at Van Nuys Boulevard and Glen Oaks Boulevard in Pacoima will be known as Marie Harris Square. Los Angeles City Councilmember Richard Allercon joined Pacoima residents on a recent Saturday in paying tribute to the late Marie Harris, a trailblazing woman and activist in the northeast San Fernando Valley.
The most important attribute that she brought was beauty. She believed that we needed to inspire people to look for beauty in life. She saw the beauty in Pacoima, and she wanted everybody else to appreciate that beauty.
The councilman was joined at the celebration by Harris's daughter, Rolene Naveja.
Things she did that she was never paid for. She just was totally a community worker. If she saw something that needed to be done, she jumped in and did it.
Born in 1922, Harris, who died in 2009, was not only a couture designer and businesswoman, she was also an activist involved in the San Fernando Valley and Double ACP.
She had an eye for making things better, always. She could look at anything and improve on it and make it so much better than it was before. And she raised everybody in this community.
Naveja and Pacoima residents agree that while known for her career in the beauty industry, beautifying her community through public service was Harris's ultimate legacy. In 1986, Marie Harris was even named honorary mayor of Pacoima by then-councilmember Ernie Bernardi. In this week's List of Things to Do, the Chinese Lantern Festival, a Gene Autry double feature, and talented young musicians in concert. The Chinese-American Museum invites you to its 11th Annual Lantern Festival, taking place Saturday, March 3rd, from noon to 7:00 PM. The event will be held at the Chinese-American Museum, which is located at the El Pueblo de los Angeles Historical Monument. Each year, the Lantern Festival, which celebrates the closing of the Lunar New Year festivities, spotlights a Chinese-American recreation of a traditional village street fair featuring brilliant lantern displays and exciting musical, acrobatic, and lion dance performances. Festival goers can try their hand at lantern-making, Chinese opera-style face painting, kite-building, Chinese calligraphy, and much more. And to cap off the event, there will be a spirited Glow-in-the-Dark Silver Dragon Stage performance in the evening. The Chinese-American Museum is located at 425 North Los Angeles Street. Go to camla.org for more information. Also on Saturday, March 3rd, two Gene Autry films will be screened at the Autry National Center's Western Legacy Theater. The double matinee starts at noon and features Red River Valley and Mule Train. Red River Valley, released in 1936, has Autry playing a cowhand who, along with his partner, help Arizona cattlemen who are trying to build the dam. But they face unscrupulous businessmen who attempt to hinder these plans for their own profit. Mule Train, released in 1950, has Autry befriending a prospector who discovers natural cement and helping him promote his discovery. Admission to the Autry is $10 for adults with discounts for students, seniors, and children. The Autry is located at 4700 Western Heritage Way. Go to theautry.org for details. And caps, the Los Angeles Children's Chorus and American Youth Symphony at the Walt Disney Concert Hall on Sunday, March 4th, at 7:30 PM. Los Angeles Children's Chorus is where children ages 6 to 18 from across greater Los Angeles gather together to become world-class singers through hard work, dedication, and passion. Meanwhile, the American Youth Symphony trains gifted young musicians for professional careers in symphony orchestras. The two come together for an amazing concert on Sunday, March 4th. The Disney Concert Hall is located at 111 South Grand Avenue downtown. Ticket information can be found at lafil.com. And remember, you can find this information on our Facebook page. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. Year of the Dragon or not, many LA cyclists were on fire as they took on the annual Chinatown Firecracker Bike Run. Here's Anna Marcos.
Time to roll as the annual Chinatown Firecracker Bike Ride kicked off. Riders cruised from Chinatown through Elysian Park, Dodger Stadium, the LA River, Griffith Park, and back. But there was no stopwatch at the end. This was a community event, not a race.
It's a wonderful event that promotes a healthy lifestyle and physical activities for local Angelenos.
The Chinatown Firecracker Bike Ride helps ring in the new Chinese New Year. And this time around, it's the Year of the Dragon. The bike ride is now in its fourth year and growing.
This is the biggest turnout we've had. We started out with 250 riders. This year, I think we have over 1,000 riders. We're really happy about this year.
Not much of a firecracker bicyclist? No worries. There was an easy 20-mile ride and a hilly 30-mile ride. And this guy was a total newbie, having only ridden his bike around the block.
A little bit around the neighborhood, but not 25 miles, not 20 miles.
Oh, it was awesome. It was an awesome ride. This is actually my first 10K.
Okay, we won't tell her she rode a lot further than that. And this little guy, well, he obviously didn't need a bike to blow off steam. But no matter what your cycling level, this day was about the wheels under you, the nature and sunlight above, and oh yeah, all those biking buddies in every direction. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
There was also a Firecracker 5 and 10K Walk Run the next day. The money raised helps benefit Chinatown's Chinese New Year activities. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at ellicityview.org. You can also follow us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Need a recycling center? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
When I first came to the US...
I brought my hopes and dreams for a better life.
Since becoming a US citizen.
I'm running for public office.
I've traveled with the freedom and security of a US passport.
And I voted for President of the United States.
US citizenship means a better life.
I chose opportunity.
I chose freedom.
I chose responsibility.
I chose to become a US citizen.
I am a proud American.
G'day, Troy McCavern from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel.
Good morning. It is Tuesday, February 28th. I want to welcome you to Los Angeles City Council Meeting. The council meets three times a week. We meet at 10 o'clock, 10 a.m. on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. The public is welcome. All of our meetings and committee hearings are open to the public. You are certainly welcome. My name is Herb Wesson, and I am the president of the Los Angeles City Council. With that said, Madam Clerk, call the robe.
Allercon, Buscaglia, and Cardenas, Englander Garcetti, Weezer, Corretts, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Wesson, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Garcetti moves. Mr. Corretts, seconds. Next.
Communitary resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zine moves. Ms. Perry, seconds. That brings us where?
Uh, Mr. President, today is Tuesdays. Now would be the time for the flag salute.
If I could ask everyone in the council chambers to rise, and we will salute our flag led by Mr. Jose Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Everyone, please put your hand over your heart, face the flag, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, and to the Constitution of the United States of America.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Members, at this time, I'd like to direct your attention to the agenda. Let's go through this as quickly as we can. With that said, Madam, in fact, looking at my notes here, Madam Clerk, I see there's a request to continue Item 19 to March 7th. So without objection, we will do that. Are there any more requests for... Are there any more requests for continuance? Alrighty then. So let's go through the first two items for today.
Items 1 and 2 are billing and safety liens, known as for public hearing. The department reports that Item 2 may be received and filed in as much as a lien has been paid.
Okay, without objection, that item will be received and filed. On Item 1, members, any cards? I mean, not any cards, any specials? Anybody want to call that special? Are there any cards on that item?
Yes, there's cards on Items 1 and 2.
Okay, so let's move to the next set of agenda items.
Items 3 through 19 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, who called 3? Joey B.
3 double special.
Specials members? Specials members, what about cards?
Public hearing has been held on these items. So no public hearing is required unless you wish to.
Okay, then, on those items, why don't we just begin the voting process? Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Items 20 and 21 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Any cards on these items?
No cards.
Specials members? Mr. Reyes? No specials? What would you recommend I do then, sir? I think we open and close the roll on the public hearing and begin the voting process by opening the roll? That's my fault, members, for playing around. I should have, we should, okay, Mr. Labange.
Just 21. It's a verbal amendment on 21. I don't need to call it special, but could I read it in right now? That I move pursuant?
Go right ahead.
It's the Section 2.2 of the Administrative Code that the regularly scheduled meeting day and time for trade, commerce, and tourism committee be changed from 8:45 on the 1st and 3rd Tuesdays to 10 a.m. The 2nd and 4th Mondays. This change will be effective immediately upon adoption of this motion. Is that right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. City Attorney, are we fine with that?
Thank you.
Okay, then, on these items, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
To general public comment or items called special? Excuse me, Mr. President, there's a request for Item 21 to go forth with.
Okay, I'm going to begin the general public comment. At this time, I'm going to call Phyllis Doherty, Sean Murphy, and I think this says Dollhouse Please come forward. Good morning.
You ready? Good morning, Phyllis Doherty. I am here as a former city employee and also as the author of an article that's on opposingviews.com, which I hope you each read. I'm going to place a copy in each of your offices. This is "The Regosa Which Hunts Masked L.A. Animal Services: Brenda Barnett's Failed Management." Has some painful information, but it's going to have much more painful information unless we get some attention to this issue. Right now, you have seven captains off-duty in Los Angeles Animal Services at a cost of $42,000 a month. We have had 12 employees on leave, and yet we have insufficient budget to run this department. There are no charges against any of these employees. We have a commissioner who just quit last, our last meeting. This is Ms. Mussolero. And I think it's important that you understand some of the things that are going on in animal services beyond that. Here's the Bernheim Foundation. This is the gentleman who placed the banners all over the East Valley, North Central, and West Valley shelters and chopped down 14 of our trees paid by bond funds. He no longer has his foundation, but his advertisement is still up. Here he is with Ms. Barnett, and there he is with Mr. Coretts. He did this with no penalty. They're still up there, and they are still advertising for him. Here's Ms. Barnett and Ms. Mussolero on the No More Homeless Pets Best Friends Board. And here is the nonprofit started by Ms. Coretts and Ms. Mussolero. City Attorney and the CAO had never heard of it. I'm going to skip to the back because this is where the person who set up the retail store under this nonprofit that Ms. Barnett set up is advertising from the store for dog training. In addition to that, Ms. Barnett set it up with the permit without an inspection.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy.
Morning, Mr. President. Good morning, Mr. President, City Council. I got a haircut. I, if, I'm sure everybody remembers 15 years ago today, for those who lived in North Hollywood and still live in North Hollywood, there was a, I'm not going to go into details, but I think people remember what happened 15 years ago today. I remember where I was. I was on a bus. I thank the good Lord that I'm still alive.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Next.
Yes, my name on the internet, in the media, is called Dollhouse Dude. It refers to a house I wore on my head. And the only meaning it has is that every single human being in the world deserves to have a roof over their head. The way we're doing business, you have created, we have created a homeless-making system, and we need to create a parallel system under which nobody will ever go homeless for any reason. The system that I am proposing is that we will all line each other up and finance each other a home without the need of banking or any governmental agency. We will not be caught up in red tape. It will be a voluntary system, and I would like City Council to begin supporting me on this idea because it will not hurt your abilities to make money for the city. But everybody will wind up with a home and without a landlord. If we do it correctly, it's like a social science formula. Like I said before, scientists follow formulas to create results. So we need to create a formula by which we create a parallel system where the rich are left alone because they already have what they need, and the poor all wind up with a home and not a landlord. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Martha Rojas, Matt Dowd, Zumadog, please come forward.
Good morning to everybody. My name is Martha Rojas. I am with Bueno Garre Foundation. We are a nonprofit. I'm here on behalf of Ms. Blanca Cardenas, the family, which she was trying to get a modification with Bank of America. I'm also an activist for the modifications, trying to keep the people in their home. Ms. Blanca Cardenas was trying to get a modification with Bank of America, and she's been fighting with them. She lives in North Hollywood. What happened was she didn't know her house got sold, and it got bought by an investment. Last Wednesday, she was fighting for her rights to stay in her property. The Van Nuys police came because she got citizen arrest by the investor, and the Van Nuys police did not respect the bankruptcy so she had filed. They arrested her, took her into custody. She was supposed to be released with a fine of $1,000 because it was only a trespassing, but she was not released. We tried to fight for her, to get her out. The Van Nuys police went ahead and ran her background check, which they're not supposed to do, and they placed a hold of ice because she does not have documents. She's married to a citizen, has two children here, a 17-old-a-month baby, that she's crying for her mom, and we want her to be released immediately because what they did to her is an unlawful thing, and it was not correct by the Van Nuys police. I'm here to request an investigation on behalf of Ms. Blanca's family on the Van Nuys police. This is not right what they did. She was trying to protect her home for her family, her children, and they arrested her and did not release her just because they didn't want to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr.
Yes, thank you. First of all, something I just thought of, Herb, that I didn't like last week is that this dude, this black guy came up, and he had all these things to say that were important, and then you go, "Oh gee, I like the hat. Where'd you get the hat from? I'd like to get one." I mean, it's the worst thing you can do to someone, so please don't ever do that to me, ever. Here's your city attorney, right? On the front cover of the L.A. Weekly, Dennis Zine's best buddy of all time, defending him of everything he does. You've got the Grammys and the Oscars and all these things happening in the city of Los Angeles, but they're making out your city attorney to be an ape. Look at it, a big, dirty, hairy ape, which should be reserved for me because I'm the bad guy, and that's the mistake you made. You judged me on my looks and thought, "Oh, yeah, these bums off the beach." Gee, this bum got a federal injunction against the city of L.A. without an attorney, knocked out their whole permit and lottery system. And here's why I'm still mad, because now you've got a new system. And there's a rule, you're not allowed to have an umbrella at the beach laying down on its side. Laying down on its side. I got the ticket for that in the weekend. All these other things going on in the city. Oh, Matt Dowd, gee. And it was windy as hell. I wanted to, I don't want it to blow over and hurt someone. So you lay them down, right? And it's just sitting there protecting me. I've got a mic. I don't want the wind blowing in when I'm doing a show. It's just protection for my equipment. So that's the next lawsuit, so on the new one, I'm going to knock it out now, if, you know, if that's what they're going to do. I mean, is this ridiculous? This is Carmen Tutanich instructing LAPD, so this is the ape, instructing all the other apes, because that's what they're turning into if that's the kind of enforcement in the city of Los Angeles. As you know, it's insanity. But they, "Oh, no, your umbrella's lying down. Gee, let me just write you a ticket. No warning, no anything, boys."
Thank you, Mr. Zumadog.
Yes, thank you for the cameras, mics, and television network to address the constituency. My name's Zumadog, zumadog.com. And yes, I made the cover of L.A. Weekly, everybody. Check it out, our news stats now, Carmen the Barbarian Trampling Rights of Everybody. And if you look right here, the icon is the representation of the person having rights trampled. If you look at the little teeny-weeny thing right there, it's Zumadog, y'all. We'll be showing that to the jury. Now, we need to get a hold of this guy, Carmen Tutanich, because he's running for District Attorney, but let's talk about his performance here as city attorney. First of all, you need to tell Tutanich to instruct the police. You're violating rights the second you walk into City Hall. Now, you don't have to show ID to attend the council meetings. You need to tell the police, "Stop saying, 'Can I see your ID?'" Most people, okay, "I went in on Friday. ID, please. No, I don't want to show it. Uh, well, where are you going? The council meeting. Well, can I see your ID? No, I don't want to show the ID." She calls over another cop, "Where are you going? The council meeting. Let's see the ID." "I don't want to show ID." It's more than anybody's reasonably forced to endure. It has a chilling effect. Imagine all the people that might not have an ID or might not want to show it to come protest against the government when they see cops taking IDs and writing down the information. But now here's the real problem, and this will be the lawsuit. Contact Zumadog at zumadog.com because for years, the city has been asking for your name and address on the public comment cards, and then they've been posting it online. The state law requires the city to say that it's not required and that it's a public document and that it will be posted online. Telemarketers, criminals, terrorists, all have access to the information of the people that came here to speak because you didn't tell them. Carmen Tutanich, address this issue now.
Thank you. Okay, next, I'm going to ask that, I know this person filled out a card, I need, I'm going to need you to come up and help me understand how to pronounce your name. It says you're affiliated with Operation Take Back America. I do not want to butcher your name, sir, so I'm going to have you teach me how to say it, and then we're going to go to the Valley for Dr. Daniel Weissman, and then we have our own Dr. Tom Williams here. Sir, good morning and welcome to you.
Good morning to you too, and good morning to each one of you here, and I want to say may God bless each one of you here for everything you're doing for Los Angeles and especially America. I'm here this morning to address Blanca Cardenas' arrest on Wednesday.
Now, give me your name, though.
My name is Nana Bedu Banso Ayam.
Thank you.
I'm here to address Blanca Cardenas' arrest on Wednesday, February 22nd, around 12:00 p.m. At her house at 557 East Elm Avenue in North Hollywood by Los Angeles Police Department, trying to fight to protect her home that was foreclosed on illegally. Now, this is a war that America is facing, and we don't have our government to back us up, neither do we have the court system to back us up, neither do we have the police system to back us up. Now, the only people that we have is ourselves and God. So if we don't have our police department, who's supposed to be protecting us, to help us, then my question is, whom do we have to turn on? Now, what is the city doing to help us, to help ourselves, you know, save our homes? Now, my second question is, does the police department have the legal jurisdiction to enforce civil matters? That's what I have to say today.
Thank you very much, sir. Dr. Weissman in the Valley, and then our own Dr. Williams here in L.A. City Hall.
Oh, Herb, you're hurting my feelings. I'm your doctor too, and you know it.
You're my, okay, you're my Valley doctor. Okay.
Okay, at any rate, I'm here to talk to you about the redistricting commission and all of its activities. Certainly, in a public comment, there's only the opportunity to introduce this. This has been going on for six months, as you know. Mr. Wesson is very much involved in the redistricting process. The maps that they have come up with were made with a number of really serious problems, but all the time that these maps were being developed, I kept coming forth to them to try to encourage the redistricting commission to create maps that were made around the neighborhood council boundaries. They didn't think it could be done, but frankly, I have done it. I have the maps here. You're now seeing them, and apparently you're seeing them for the first time because these were submitted several weeks ago. All 15 districts honor all of the neighborhood councils on these maps. They don't please everyone, nobody could, but only eight councils were split, and three of those councils were split by their own request in the manner in which they wished to be split. The redistricting commission's 15 maps for the 15 proposed city council districts split, they say 32, but I will tell you, it's far more like 40 of the neighborhood councils. Some of them are split in three parts. Before, we had neighborhood councils in the last redistricting, 48 of the approximately 100 councils were split at that time, and there was no regard for neighborhood councils. This time, the redistricting commission thinks they've done a good job because they've decreased that. I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, of the commission, of the council, and the other departments, they have not really done a good job of it. It's going to be up to you to sort out what is good and what needs to be done, and I thank you for your consideration.
Okay, Dr.
Dr. Tom Williams, L.A. 32 Neighborhood Council Board Member and long-term resident of the great district of El Serena. What are we looking at tomorrow? There's a subject tomorrow. It's money. What money? Well, it's for the Department of Public Works and its various bureaus. This is one of the issues. My bill, when I get it from DWP, is about 30% Water and Power and 60%, 70% Department of Public Works. In fact, if you ask DWP, they would love In fact, if you ask DWP, they would love to have the board in the Department of Public Works take over the building, and then they would take much less heat that they now experience because people will complain to them regarding their sewerage and their sanitation, solid waste fees. Because those are things that we cannot reduce. We can reduce the sewerage a little bit, but it's a complicated calculation, and we don't mind. But solid waste, it's based upon the number of bins, no matter how little you have in those bins, because we either compost, recycle and/or do other things, reduce, become more efficient. So right now, we have a ratepayers advocate for water and power. But the other gorilla on the bill is the Department of Public Works. I would highly recommend that we have a ratepayers advocate and a full disclosure of how the monies are generated and spent by the Department of Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ron Tansman, Aaronak Norjanian, Gail Tolbert Miles.
I have some handouts for each of the council members as well. I don't know who I give those to. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak before the council. I first want to thank you on the great job that everyone's doing here to provide such a wonderful city to live in, such as Los Angeles. So I want to say thank you. My matter concerns a Department of Building and Safety lien that was placed against property that I own. I purchased the property through foreclosure in November of 2011. The foreclosure should have wiped out a lien that the Department of Building and Safety placed on my property. And unfortunately, the Department of Building and Safety is not recognizing that. When I asked them to point to the governing documents to provide any kind of, to substantiate their claim, they refused to do so. Any rate, I have the documents here for everyone to review so they could look at and see that my claim and request is valid. And I'd like to request that the council have the Department of Building and Safety release this lien as it should be and as it's written in the charter as well. That's it.
Thank you.
Who may I give these to?
The sergeant.
That's for each of the members, yes, and the president.
Ms. Miles?
And I apologize, is there someone that will get back to me or?
Why don't we have one of the sergeants talk to him in a little more detail and see who we can recommend chat with, with him? Okay, I don't see Mr. Norjanian, so let's go straight to Ms. Miles. Oh, I called you. You know the rules. Come on, you can go after Ms. Miles.
Good morning, President and members of the council. My name is Gail Tolbert Miles. My students refer to me as Ms. Gail. It was not that long ago that I was invited guest along with other childcare providers here, and I was honored. I'm wearing one of the buttons that you pinned on me to honor childcare providers. I've been a childcare provider for many years, servicing my community. I'm in the district of Herb Weston, sixteen forty-eight, South Orange Drive. That's located at La Brea near Venice. I, for many years, have been a teacher, Head Start teacher, proud to be a teacher, and I teach the children at risk. I closed down my home childcare business where I provided a safe sanctuary for the children, a safe haven, and teaching them because I am a credited teacher here in California, caring for the children at risk. I now work for Head Start Program, and I also work for children at risk servicing Imperial Courts, Jordan Downs and Gonzaga Village. But now, a teacher that cares for students at risk, now I find myself at risk. Yes, I'm at risk for losing my home, my property. How ironic is it that I cared for children, infants, school-aged children, preschoolers at my home for many years? How ironic is that? I provided a safe haven for the youth, for my community, and now I'm a teacher at risk because of the practices of predatory lenders, corruption. I'm facing foreclosure. My home is in default. I have nowhere to turn. I, I just wanted to come here today to put a face on the situation. I'm at risk. I'm trying to save my home. I need help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, respectable city council members. Dear fellow Angelinas, actually, as a liberal Democrat and human rights advocate, I proudly announce my candidacy to run for the seat of California State Assembly. I'm not only going to run for that seat, I'm going to win the seat and, you know, and beat our contestants. I run my election campaign on principles of legal and social justice, racial integration, environmental protection and technological revolution. As a tax and spending liberal, I propose to raise taxes fifty percent against wealthy tax evaders and rich oil-producing and gasoline-selling corporations, about fifty percent, in order to replenish state coffers, in order to have money to increase social spending, you know, in order to, you know, restore social justice to the system. Otherwise, our social program will run out of money and people won't be able to enjoy it, and businesses will lose their customers. And also, I demand closing down so-called medical marijuana dispensaries, whose very existence poses a federal danger to national security and represents a gross, gross federal offense. As a existence of so-called medical marijuana dispensary violates United States Control Substances Act, I demand that you city council members cancel the city ordinance, notorious city ordinance, one eighty-one, five three zero, that legalized illegal sales of dope of harmful narcotic marijuana in the city of Los Angeles. Many people I've met in marijuana anonymous meetings during marijuana anonymous meetings complained to me that we had lost all our savings. And as you can see, people losing their savings due to lamentable state of psyche, you know, because our mental health deteriorates, that's why we lose our home, lose our livelihoods. And you council members are responsible for them, for them losing their, losing their livelihoods. And I hope only the federal attorneys will indict and prosecute all members of the city of Los Angeles city government for legalizing narcotics.
Thank you, thank you. Cheryl Eickley, Gerardo Quintones and Henry Marine, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Cheryl Eickley. I live in District Four, and I'm a member of Occupy Fights Foreclosures, which is an official subcommittee of Occupy Los Angeles. Today, I speak for myself, and I'm asking that the city intervene, the city council intervene in the case of Blanca Cardenas. We have some people here with us in support. She's a young mother. Her youngest daughter is still nursing at seventeen months old, and she was taken from her family, defending her home from a fraudulent foreclosure and then a legal eviction from her home. And the San Francisco County Recorder just less than two weeks ago said that all of the foreclosures that they had audited, ninety-nine percent of them had some sort of questionable activity. Eighty-four percent of them had one clear violation of law, and over sixty-six percent of them had four or more violations of the law. Right now, Mrs. Cardenas, she is being held with an ice hole. I don't know if Councilman Cardenas is here, but she does live in his district, District Six. We had went to his office yesterday just to let his staff know that we would be coming in today. And apparently, the Van Nuys commander, watch commander, was retaliating against her because of footage, cell phone footage was recorded of the officers making the arrest. And so they looked into her fingerprints, her immigration background. She is married to a legal citizen. She has two children that are U.S. citizens, and she's just going through the process to be a legal citizen herself. I'm asking the city council to check in, do an investigation with the LAPD to make sure that everything in this case was done properly because we believe it was fraudulent and it hurt the community. Thank you.
Please come forward, sir.
Good morning, President. Good morning, I love you. We need a translator.
She's, she's ready, so please proceed.
Buenos dias, señor presidente. Buenos dias, miembros of the council.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, honorable members of the city council.
Mi nombre es Gerardo Quiñones.
My name is Carlos Quiñones.
Gerardo.
Gerardo, correction by interpreter.
Gerardo Quiñones. Soy el esposo de Blanca Cardenas.
My name is Gerardo Quiñones. I'm the husband of Blanca Cardenas.
Blanca Cardenas, el pasado miércoles fue arrestada.
Last Wednesday, Blanca Cardenas was arrested.
Tras tratar de defender el hogar en el cual vivíamos desde hace nueve años.
After trying to protect the home in which we lived for the past nine years.
Tratando, está, creemos que estábamos tratando de, de trabajar con el banco.
We have been trying to work with the bank.
Y estamos bajo la, amparados bajo la ley de bancarrota.
And we're protected under the bankruptcy law.
La policía llega y sin hacer caso de la, de los papeles de la bancarrota.
The police officers arrived and without paying attention or regarding the documents of the bankruptcy that we filed.
Le dice, la acusa de estar traspasando nuestro hogar.
Accused her of trespassing our own home.
Y le dice que si se sale, o, o la arrestan.
And they threatened her, "Either you leave, get out, or we will arrest you."
Obviamente ella está defendiendo su hogar y tenemos papeles para comprobarlo.
Obviously, she was just trying to protect her home, and we have documents to support that.
La policía no hace caso de esto y es arrestada.
The police officers, however, do not pay attention to this plea and arrest her.
A pesar de que tenemos una ley que prohíbe al Departamento de Policía reportar a las personas a migración.
Even though we have a law that prevents the police officers from reporting people to the immigration department, to ICE.
La policía hace caso, omiso de eso, y es reportar al Departamento de Migración, los cuales ponen un hold.
The police officers, however, ignore that and report her to ICE, to Department of Immigration, and therefore, a hold is put on her.
Eso pasó hace cinco días, el pasado miércoles.
This happened five days ago, last Wednesday.
El mañana ya tenemos, perdón, ya tenemos ocho días mañana.
Tomorrow will be one week.
Y aún no sabemos aún, a pesar de que ha estado de la cárcel de Van Nuys, la manda a la cárcel de Linwood, estamos esperando que la pasen a la cárcel de aquí de Los Ángeles.
She's been transferred from the Van Nuys jail to Linwood Detention Center, and we're waiting for her to be transferred here to the Los Angeles jail.
A pesar de que hemos tenido mucho apoyo de la comunidad, y ya casi son ocho días de que ella está arrestada, yo como persona, como padre, estoy sufriendo mucho.
Even though eight days have passed by, and we have a lot of community support, I, as a father, am in great pain.
La niña más chiquita que tiene un año siete meses, la extraña mucho.
The youngest baby, who's seventeen months old, correction by interpreter, a year and seven months, misses her mother a lot.
Les quiero pedir por favor que paren esta, que paren, que paren esta, esta ley, que paren estas, este abuso de la policía que está haciendo separando familias.
I would like to please ask you to stop these actions being done by the police department and, which is causing a lot of families to be divided and get separated.
Yo soy solo un caso que de alguna manera se dio a conocer, pero allá afuera hay muchas personas que están sufriendo lo mismo.
I'm only one case out of a lot others that are outside and are currently happening right now, but I'm one of many who are suffering a great deal.
Y esta mañana yo les vengo a pedir que pongan una acción contra la policía.
And this morning, I'm here to beg you to please do some kind of action towards a police department.
Debemos de parar estas separaciones familiares.
So these families' separations can stop.
Y sobre todo también, los, las acciones que están tomando los bancos para quitarnos nuestros, nuestros hogares.
Also to help us with some kind of action on your behalf so that the banks could stop doing what they're doing in taking our homes away from us.
Could you tell him that it's time for him to close?
Muchas gracias, les agradezco mucho.
Thank you very much. I truly appreciate your attention.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Was it made clear the address of this location?
Five 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 seven. Elmer Avenue.
Mr. Reyes, Jim from Tony's office is going to have someone speak with them.
Thank you.
In the Valley, we have Mary Ann Fogler, Donna Peirman, and then we'll return to City Hall for Carlos Malaquín. Ms. Fogler, good morning.
Yeah, welcome. Herb, you know what's going on. Can you give me the indulgence to give me an extra minute like you gave the folks before? Because this is regarding homelessness.
Go on, Ms. Fogler, we usually give extra time when we have to translate, so that's why they got extra time. But go on, I'll give you a few extra seconds.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, to make up the time I missed. My girlfriend, he's recently got homeless, and they don't have time to have anything to do with me right now because of the seriousness of this situation is that you have, they're lower-middle-class folks who can't get a place to live, and they are legal people here. They're legally here. They're not illegals, okay? If you want to come here illegally, make yourselves legal, wait your turn, get yourself on the list. There's plenty of people who need homes, and my girlfriend, she doesn't want to see me or anything because she doesn't have time because she's homeless, okay? And this is really, really bad. You people have, it's, you know, and he can't get any work. He works for the school district. He's a substitute teacher, and he's an American black. You talk about having American black month. You don't even help the black people who need it, you know? He can't get work enough so he can get a place to live, and she doesn't want to see me or anything right now. They said I have to give him the so-called, quote, "space." What is it? How long is this going to carry on? They're just low-middle-class folks, you know, and I don't know what you people have in store here, but this is going to be outrageous if you get rid of the middle class in this country because it's going to be a downfall for this country without the middle class. It's like every other country, they got rid of the middle class. And it's just going to lead to nothing but disaster, and you're not going to have anybody sort of paying, helping the poor, and the rich are going to be the only ones here, and you're going to have only the poor, and that's it to serve you. And the middle class won't be there, and it's not going to be any rights. We're not going to have any civil rights, no rights at all. So what are we going to do if you can't provide, you know, give the breaks to the middle class? I'm talking about people who are making like between twenty to sixty or seventy thousand dollars.
Thank you. Let's get Ms. Peirman.
Hello. Of course, I went to the Howard Berman and Brad Sherman, and I saw Jan Perry. It was good to see her there. But we shouldn't be having this situation where we have all these homeless and our mayor is buying a yacht. Yes, I saw over on the Channel Thirty-five that they have a yacht so they can show off and see how well Los Angeles is doing. In the meantime, the middle class, there's too many people going, being foreclosed and I know, and homeless. I know in my situation, I work for the Social Security hearings. I see a lot of people all the time over in our area that we could, they'll never be able to, people who are badly disabled can't get on because they, they're homeless. Anyway, so we need to do something about that, and we need to have the city council stop overspending. That's the area when they need to, I see that we have, we see that we have still fee waivers in another form. I see them coming back when we do things for, have paying for the Grammys and asking for the employees and newest city employees to pay ten percent so that they can, the current ones. The current ones. The current ones to pay ten percent. In the meantime, because the city council likes to spend more money. And I don't even believe that the CRA has gone. I believe they're going to come back in another form. Of course, they have all those things that they had to fix up. So don't think that CRA is gone because they have a lot of projects and say, "Well, we have to fix these projects. We can't. Let's leave them and abandon them." And so they're going to be overspending on that, and they overspend on paying for the Grammys when the Grammys should have been paying for the staples. That's it. Grammys paid for the staples. And so we need to have... We need to bring fairness back, and don't overspend. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pierman. I think now we have Mr. Malaquín.
Good morning, members of the city council. My name is Carlos Malaquín. I'm with Occupy L.A. And as you can see, homeowners continue to struggle in their fights to protect their homes. There's so many people that are hurting out there. They continue to call on Occupy L.A. to help them because the system is broken, the system is not reaching to those families. I urge you to look into a moratorium on all foreclosures until this is settled. There is things that the city can do to protect the families. On March twelve, we are going to be protesting outside the county's records office because of the crimes that are being committed against the families. All this documentation that is so fraudulent, it has to stop. We urge you to do something and to do something strong against what the banks are doing against the families. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mary Goncalves, Martin... Martin, help me, brother.
Quiñones.
Quiñones. Quasi.
Is that Henry earlier? What happened?
Are you up now, Mar?
Huh?
Did I call you?
Earlier, yeah. Called the name, but he didn't...
Wait, when did I call you?
Henry Marine. I'm Henry Marine.
Oh, yeah. You know what, Henry? You're up first. I sure did. Sorry.
Thank you. As you recall, Mr. Rizzo and Mr. William Carter said pigs get fat and hogs get slaughtered. However, MOU shows every percent of appointees of the mayor agreed to withhold from the pay of prevailing wage employees and use at will. So therefore, I'm looking for the principal initially given shelter for hours of government service. So how do you people account for my pigs and hogs without me saying, "Soo wee!" It's right there in black and white how much you took. You got to give something, you got to take, you got to bring it back. I can't make no money unless a third party takes my money, gives me no interest unless a third party take my money in the first place. MOU Thirty-Five and Sixty-Two and Hackley MOUs show how much y'all took in the first place. Now, I want this money rolled over to the public employee pension and benefit plans that it was diverted from for the past twenty-two years. What's the problem? The word trial is the product of and the acronym for the reptile impersonating a lawyer with no leg to legally stand on in one nation under God. And we know the words DBT and DATH resulted from illegal trust deductions. And Job showed us we can get twice as much as a third-party demanded power attorney to use at will in the first place. So there ain't nothing changing to people doing it. And this is Black History Month, so Mr. Weston, make some history.
Thank you. So we should have Mary Goncalves, Martin, and Quasi.
My name is Mary Goncalves. I'm in the Fifth District, Mr. Paul Coret's area. I've been a small business owner for the last twenty-five years. I'm losing my home. I applied for a loan modification. It was denied, the foreclosure proceedings start, and I am being thrown out of my house. I have lost my small business, and I've been in hospital six times, have had six surgeries and six long hospitalizations. I still face three additional surgeries, and it's very difficult every time I go to the hospital and come back, there is an eviction notice on the door. At this point, I think they'd have to lift me and throw me out bodily because we have done an audit on my loan documents. I was paying my mortgage to Indy Mac, which became One West, and now this German bank, Deutsche Bank, has taken my home. I have an eighty-five-year-old mother. My own health is failing. She has survived three bypass surgeries. I have gone through eleven already, eleven surgeries. Why am I being thrown out of my house? I've paid for years. I have owned my own small business. Mr. Coret's have been to my store, and now I have nothing. I'm back to square one. I came forty years ago with a little suitcase, and today I'm facing worse than that. Why is it when the documents are so full of errors, robo-signing? I'm a note republic myself. I know someone has to stand in front of me. I need your help.
Okay, Mr. Coret's, if you could have a staff person or yourself chat with Ms. Goncalves over on the side.
My staff person's over there, so if you could chat with them on the side, that would be great.
Thank you, ma'am, for coming. Good morning.
Good morning. I request an interpreter.
Mi nombre es Martín Quiñones.
Good morning. My name is Martín Quiñones.
Y estoy en apoyo al caso de Blanca Cárdenas.
I'm here in support of Blanca Cárdenas' case.
Me voy a enfocar más bien en pedirle su ayuda.
What I'm going to focus on is on requesting your help.
Por hacerles ver las violaciones con las cuales fue ella evacuada de su casa.
I want to bring to your attention the violations under which she was taken or evicted from her home.
Okay. Yo estuve en el momento en que el sheriff llegó a sacarla.
I was there at the moment when the sheriff came to evict her.
Y esta persona fue sacada sin haberle servido una hoja que debe de ser dada y se llama three-day notice.
She was taken out without even being given a piece of paper that is called a three-day notice.
Cuando yo hablé con el sheriff's department y le hice ver ese punto...
When I spoke to a representative of the sheriff's department and made that point...
El sheriff's department, al oír que nuestro abogado estaba por llegar en ese momento...
The sheriff's department, when they heard that our attorney was about to arrive any minute...
Abandonó la propiedad sin haber hecho el posting en su casa.
Left the property without placing that notice at her home.
Posteriormente llega la policía de Los Ángeles.
Then the LAPD arrived after that.
En el siguiente caso.
On the following case.
También en una clara violación de poder que tienen...
Also in a clear violation of their power and authority.
La arrestaron y la sacan con lujo de fuerza.
She was arrested and by force was taken out.
Ellos se inclinaron, al presentarle a nosotros los documentos, se inclinaron por la persona que compró la casa del Banco de América.
When we presented the documents to them showing that she could stay there, what they did is they took the side of the person who purchased the house with Bank of America.
Solamente porque él la llamó.
Only because he called the police.
Okay. Nosotros tenemos leyes aquí en California.
We have laws here in California.
Y ustedes la representan.
And you're representing those laws.
Tienen a Blanca detenida.
Blanca is currently detained.
Ella violó una ley.
She violated a law.
La policía que nos debe de representar a nosotros violó las leyes, sheriff's department and police department. ¿Qué han hecho sobre ella?
The police and the sheriffs were supposed to represent us and follow the laws.
Porque no...
They didn't. What have they done on our behalf and her behalf?
Porque no han sido detenidos, porque no han sido cuestionados ellos.
Why haven't they, who violated the law, have been detained and questioned as well?
Necesitamos su ayuda, su apoyo para que esto pare.
We need your help and we need your support, so this can stop.
Y esto, muchas gracias.
That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Weston. This is actually the first session that I've been with you in the chair. Congratulations to your new stage. My name is Quasi Ankruma. I'm here on behalf of the Martin Luther King Coalition for Jobs, Justice, and Peace, the Los Angeles Coffee Party, and Occupy the Hood. We are a grouping within Occupy that believes that we have to build the Occupy movement as a community-based movement. Right now, there's a firestorm going on in our communities, part of which is reflected in the massive unemployment that afflicts our city, our communities, and part of it is reflected in the massive loss of homes. And these two phenomena are very intimately connected, that and the declining income of the average American household. To people who are at home watching this, I would really like to encourage you to do what some of the other homeowners have done today, which is to come down to your public officials and talk about your situations. Don't sit at home suing in your own juices. This needs to be talked out. The crisis going on in our community around foreclosures needs to be fully understood by every public official and the public at large. We are working with many homeowners to fight the banks, who are engaged right now still in spite of this settlement that the Obama administration and Kamala Harris have signed on to, are still illegally seizing people's properties. They are committing fraud on a massive level. The extent of this has become bizarre and obscene, and I hope that in the upcoming weeks that more homeowners will appear here at City Hall to document this. I have a document, which is an analysis of this problem, which I'd like to submit for every council member. Thank you.
Thank you. You can present it to the sergeant right there. Okay. Ulysses, I believe, Hernández, Gloria Salcido, DJ Miggs, and last will be Javier Hernández.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ulysses Hernández. I come to you as a member of Occupy San Fernando Valley. We are being faced with a very bad foreclosure problem. Our communities are being torn apart. I walk outside of my house, and I'm met by foreclosures across the street from my house. My house is currently... The home I live in now is currently being foreclosed on as well. Since I have started involving myself with Occupy, I have found out that more and more homeowners are finding out that nobody is there to help them, nobody speaking about government-wise, nobody is there to protect them. So what they are doing is they're deciding, "The hell with the government. Let's fight these things ourselves." And that's what's going on, and that's what's going to continue to go on unless you guys address this issue. And if you guys don't address this issue, the homeowners will address this issue, and we will just push you guys aside. So I would just suggest to you guys that you get on top of this issue. This should be at the top of your list. Fight the foreclosures. Regulate the banks. You guys got to do something. I look around here, and everybody here is just laughing on their phones. Nobody's paying attention. What are we talking about, foreclosures? You guys are just brushing us off. This is BS. We need to address this issue. I urge you guys to address this issue. More and more foreclosures now!
Thank you, Mr. Hernández. Gloria, followed by DJ Miggs. Is Mr. Miggs here?
No.
Oh, it's a DJ, it's a Mrs. Miggs. I'm sorry. Please, go forward.
Necesito un traductor.
And here's the interpreter.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Gloria Saucedo, y yo represento hermandad mexicana en Panorama City.
Good morning. My name is Gloria Saucedo, and I represent hermandad mexicana in Panorama City.
Somos del distrito número seis.
We are in District Six.
También parte del distrito siete.
We're also in District Seven.
Y venimos hablando sobre lo que está pasando en nuestra comunidad.
We're here to talk with you about what's taking place in our communities.
El caso principal es de Blanca Cárdenas.
The main case that we're here to speak to you about is about Blanca Cárdenas.
Pero ella es un ejemplo de muchas familias en el Valle de San Fernando.
But she's only one example of many other families and what they're going through in the San Fernando Valley.
Siempre hemos creído que la policía está para servirnos y protegernos.
We have always believed that the police is there to protect and serve us.
Sabemos que existe una economía nacional de las pérdidas de casa.
We understand that the national economy is going through a lot of difficult times, such as losing... People are losing a lot of their homes.
Sabemos que ha habido mucha ayuda económica.
We also understand that a lot of assistance, economic assistance, has taken place.
Especialmente a nivel federal.
Especially at the federal level.
Pero la realidad es que está llegando a las corporaciones.
But to tell the truth, that financial help from the federal government is going to the corporations.
Y están abandonando a las familias.
And who's being left behind are the families.
Es muy importante que nuestra comunidad se dé cuenta que hay personas que tienen más poder.
It's very important that our community realizes that they're people who have a lot more power and authority.
Para poder contratar al departamento del sheriff.
To be able to hire the sheriff department.
Y a la policía.
And the police department.
Y que van y sacan a la madrugada a las familias con la pistola en mano.
And what do they do? They go early, early in the morning and take families at gunpoint out of their homes.
Y están utilizando su poder para intimidar a nuestra comunidad.
And they're using their power to intimidate our community.
Hemos estado recibiendo muchas llamadas de la comunidad en la oficina.
In our office, we have been receiving a lot of phone calls from community members.
Que están recibiendo llamadas de gente corrupta.
They are receiving phone calls from corrupt people.
Diciéndoles que si no pagan un dinero que deben...
They're being told that if they don't pay certain amount of money that is owed...
Ellos van a llamar a la policía para que sean deportados.
That they themselves will call the police department so they can be deported.
Deben entender este concilio que nuestra comunidad tiene miedo de reportar los crímenes.
This city council needs to understand that our community members are afraid to report this type of cases.
Necesitamos un moratorium para la pérdida de casas de la familia.
We need a moratorium for the homes that the families are losing.
Y necesitamos hablar con el departamento de sheriff y policía que deben de tener más protección con las familias.
We also need to speak to representatives at the sheriff and police department that they need to protect the families a lot more.
Personas con papeles o sin papeles...
Be if the families have documents or are undocumented.
Están pagando impuestos.
Regardless, they are paying their taxes.
Y son parte de nuestra comunidad.
And they're also a part of our community.
Y necesitan la protección de ustedes.
And they need your protection.
Gracias.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, if I could have DJ Miggs come forward and Javier Hernández, please come forward now. Mr. Hernández.
Hi, good morning. So I've never spoken before to the city council before. It's actually my first time inside City Hall. I used to live right outside there on the lawn, but I've never actually been in here. My first time. Because I woke up today and I read an email that had gotten sent out, and I was really upset about it because it talked about a woman who was now being illegally detained by the government because she was trying to protect her home, the home that she had lived in for nine years. It's disgusting that this is happening. It's also kind of disgusting, and it feels like you guys don't really care. I mean, I see some of you like paying attention, but most of you, I feel like this is just what you do, and you don't really care that this is what the banks are doing, this is what the corporations are doing. This whole foreclosure stuff, it's bullshit. We need to have a moratorium for closures. That's obvious.
Ms. Miggs, watch your language the next time.
Sorry.
Mr. Hernández, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Javier Hernández. I am a homeowner in the city of Van Nuys. I bought...
I bought in 2006 at the peak of the home values. I'm currently, it's 2012, February of 2012, I'm currently awaiting trial in the foreclosure process. We heard some stories here about, well, at least we did, I don't know, I see that a lot of you guys are looking at your monitors, talking to each other. I think that's kind of disrespectful. Maybe we should pay more attention, or maybe if you have nothing to do here, you could probably go back there somewhere. I wish that more homeowners come and join us. There's a, a lot of homeowners are joining us, Occupy, to take back our homes. I hope that more homeowners pay attention and join us, and since nobody else is helping us, we need to come together and do something about it, since nobody else is doing it, and thanks for nothing.
Madam Clerk, that concludes general public comment. At this time, I would suggest to Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just briefly, thank you to those folks that came down here. For those who are here for the first time especially, we welcome you inside the chambers. And for those who have been here repeatedly, excuse me for repeating myself, and these are just points of information, Mr. City Attorney. I'm not lobbying about any of the things that we've introduced, because under our state law, we can't do that unless we put that on an agenda, and this is just public comment. But there are about five or six different things that we are working on hand-in-hand, and I do love, every single time you brought a case here, and I know in my own district, for instance, even before we had Occupy L.A. folks coming here, whenever folks have been contacting us, we have been successfully renegotiating with banks, and there is a lot of power around this horseshoe when we pick up the phone and embarrass a bank or talk to them. And every time there's been someone who comes here, I know immediately we have staff members who are coming out here and working on that. Even today, in the case in Council District Six, which was mentioned, the woman that brought a lot of people out here, that case in which the sheriff's department arrested her, they are working on that as well. We also mentioned last week, and a few of you were not here, that we set up a hotline in 2007, this was even before the foreclosure crisis, that people can call, and the embarrassment that people were talking about, where they live, these solitary lives, not reaching out, there is help before it happens. If you're on the verge of, 1-883-88-HOPE, 1-883-88-HOPE, is the number you can call, and we have trained assistants who will get on the phone with you. They're bankers themselves who will be on your side as you call your bank to renegotiate. We've now saved a half billion dollars of home equity through that hotline.
Excuse me, Mr. Garcetti.
And a hundred thousand, this is just points of information.
It's gone past a brief response, though.
If I can continue to say point of information. So a hundred thousand folks who have been kept in there. The other things that were a point of information that I invite you back to as it comes to the Housing Committee, are we have mandatory counseling for reverse mortgages, which is a new thing coming up, which we need your help on and to testify, become one of the first places potentially in the country to do that. And secondly, on those existing one, getting some mandatory counseling for everybody who's on the break.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Anyway, Madam Clerk, let us move to item three. I see Nazario's waiting patiently in the back. So let's go to item three, which I believe was called "Special" by Joey B. Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I can have Mr. Salcedo come, and also, I believe, the president of the Board of Public Works Commission, Andrea Alarcón, thank you for being here. And at last week's Public Works Committee, we had the opportunity to hear Mr. Nazario, and the skills, knowledge, and his abilities that he brings to the street services here. I wanted to thank him for his commitment thus far, his serving as an interim, and I understand it ends today, but do you want to start, Madam President, first?
Sure, if I could.
Will you get the microphone on?
Good morning, Council President Weston, Council members Andrea Alarcón, President of the Board of Public Works. It is indeed an honor to be before you today on behalf of the board to speak in support of Nazario Salceda's appointment as the permanent director of the Bureau of Street Services. Nazario began his career with the city in 1989 as a street services field engineering aide, and over the course of 23 years, Nazario worked his way up the bureau's ranks and earned the respect of his colleagues, and I believe, this nomination. While on the board, I served as the liaison to the Bureau of Street Services, and during that time, I developed a strong working relationship with Nazario. But I also developed a very good friendship with him. Even amidst a time of personal loss, I have to tell you that Nazario remained committed to the Bureau of Street Services, to the Department of Public Works, and the city of Los Angeles. With 23 years of service to the city under his belt, Nazario is fully qualified and will make city history as the first Latino director of the Bureau of Street Services. Nazario is not only a good leader, he's a good man, a man that I hold a great deal of respect for, and so I ask for your support of his appointment.
Thank you, Ms. Alarcón. Thank you so much for the time here. And Mr. Salceda, as we discussed in Public Works at the committee meeting last week, we talked about the challenging times of the city budget. Can you just share with my colleagues how you've addressed it as an interim, and how do you plan on addressing the issues of the budget when providing street services to the constituents and to the residents of the city?
Good morning. Nazario Salceda, interim director of the Bureau of Street Services. If you allow me, Councilmember Buscaino, first and foremost, I want to thank the mayor and the city council for giving me the opportunity, the privilege, to be at the helm of the Bureau of Street Services for the last 12 months in the interim capacity. It's been an honor to serve the residents of this great city as an interim director, and I'm now humbled by the opportunity to be the permanent director and once again demonstrate my devotion to the residents and to serve this magnificent, great city of Los Angeles. In response to your question, yes, we depend greatly on the eyes and the ears of our residents. We encourage residents of the city of Los Angeles to use the 3-1-1 system, one call to City Hall. We have by far the largest municipal street system in the nation. We have 28,000 lane miles of streets. That's equivalent to a freeway between L.A. and Paris, France, with two lanes on each direction. So I simply do not have enough eyes in my bureau to see every single square inch of pavement on the streets. So I depend a lot on the eyes and the ears of the residents. So I encourage residents, neighborhood councils, homeowners associations, to please, you know, if you see something that needs repairs, by all means, give us a call, and we will act upon it immediately.
And what I really enjoyed, what your approach in using the community in the problem-solving process, can you explain to my colleagues how you plan on rewarding our residents by being more active in the problem-solving process, please?
Yes, Councilman. Let me say that I embrace the participation of neighborhood councils, because they are my best engineers. They are, no one in the neighborhood knows the condition of the streets better than the residents. You know, the condition of the sidewalks, the condition of the trees. So from the first day that I became the interim director, I have attended neighborhood council meetings, community meetings, homeowners association meetings almost every other night. And I have engaged the community, and I have encouraged the community residents to become what I call honorary employees of the Bureau of Street Services. Basically, you work for me. No, I don't pay you, I don't give you any money, because I just don't have the ways to pay people, you know, any money. But instead, I pay those who get involved, I pay them back with services. I mean, if you find all these locations for me, you know, if you know where the locations that need repair are, don't keep them to yourselves, share them with me. I have developed special forms that I included on my new website for neighborhood councils. I have dedicated, by the way, a special page for neighborhood councils on my website, and I got the special forms that residents should be using to request these services.
Great. I know, Mr. President, my time is up, and I'll press my button again. But colleagues, I ask for an i-vote. Nazario, you really have a wealth of knowledge, and not only a wealth of knowledge, but a passion to serve this city, and I thank you for your time as an interim, and I ask for an i-vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hopefully, Mr. Buscaino, there will be no need to press your button again. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Chairman Buscaino. And congratulations. It's been a great joy over the last decade working with you on paving many, many streets, both in abstract terms as well as literal terms together. I think we have an incredible bureau and a great leader in you, our Bureau of Street Services. While our workers are great and do a heroic job, our streets are not. I think that we had every single year since World War II, we've seen the quality of our streets degrade, until last year, it was the first year we didn't go down. We went under interim leadership and some good stimulus funds, I think. We went from a 62 to a 63 roughly, is that right, out of 100?
Actually, we kept the 62, 62.5.
So we didn't go backwards, but it was the first year since World War II. We have literally starved our streets for five decades, more than that, sorry, six decades, six and a half decades, we have starved our streets. And so when we face the job that you have, and the growth of the city in which we've added more and more street miles, but fewer and fewer resources, what tools do we have to tackle this once and for all? This is something that, you know, we've worked very hard in my district, I'm proud of the improvements we've made in our council district in terms of our street ratings. But when I look citywide, there are so many streets in which we can look at, Mr. Englander has done a lot of research on that, the hundreds of dollars, I think, per year that people experience just in car damage and everything else, is much more than what we could put in to actually fixing these streets. So I'd wonder if you could comment on a couple of different ideas. I know Mr. Englander in the past has talked about the potential of a ballot initiative to pave our streets once and for all, and the mayor and I have been working for a while on the possibility of taking our local return dollars on Measure R, when it's only 3.75% right now, versus about 10%, or 8 to 10% more a year for us to wait over time to pave streets, that's how much more expensive it is each year. Do you support paving more streets now for cheaper and putting people back to work using Measure R, or some other creative way? Or should we just continue to manage this problem as it is?
I think, that is an excellent question, Councilmember Garcetti. I think at this point, we're going through historical times, and we need to be fiscally prudent. Every step that we take from this point on, it has to be a step, well, a step that we meticulously plan. Streets are the most visible element of the public works infrastructure, and you're right. Historically, our street network was deteriorating very rapidly as a result of the increased number of vehicles, the type of vehicles. We're seeing now enormous buses that obviously deteriorate the street in more rapid, more rapid rate. Certainly, in terms of investing, it is always critical to determine if I pay now or if I pay much more later. The public works infrastructure is no different than the engine in your vehicle. You may want to skip the 3,000-mile oil change today, and skip it for six months, 12 months, whatever. Eventually, your engine is going to fail, and instead of paying $21 at Jiffy Lu for an oil change, you're going to have to pay $1,500 for a new engine. That's exactly what we have on the street system. The biggest challenge that we have on our street system is its size, and the fact that we're paying for the sins of our grandparents. Historically, the street system, the maintenance of the street system was not being funded properly. And now it's our turn to be wise, to be intelligent, and to take the necessary steps to invest on the infrastructure. I think Measure R is a good opportunity to utilize funding right now to stop the deterioration and improve the condition of the street network.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, and your team, you have a great team at Street Services, you follow a great tradition, so I'm an i-vote. What would be helpful to us to realize as the budget season comes up, if you could give a 20-year staffing decline, because over the years, with efficiency, there has been some legitimate staffing decline, but it would really open our eyes to see how few people are. Mr. Corretza on La Jolla, just near Olympic, a very big tree fell. I happen to know the person, I was in the neighborhood. It was Monday morning, crew, the only crew in the city came out, it was a carob tree, and they took it away, but it was very challenging, it did destroy a car. All this is decayed maintenance. I think you have to think about funding cycles and what to do, and members, it's water and its weight that destroyed a street. And I remember after the 2005 year with heavy rains, I asked Mr. Smith, how did the 12th district do? Because we were getting wiped out, Mr. Garcetti and I, in the Hollywood Hills and Silver Lake Gargoyle Park. You had street systems that are post 50 and 60 and 70 that handled it. Some parts of the city, there are not street systems. Laurel Canyon, Mr. Corretza's area, they don't have the curb and gutter that others did at times, so to pay catch-up. And I spoke the other day, I had a Public Works Neighborhood Council, Neighborhood Association meeting, and your team came to go over things. We are now 100 years old as a modern city now, as a modern city, and some of the streets are that old. And so how do we replace it? How do we do that? That's a big job. Crew 152, 252, all those crews, both the grinders, all of them do a tremendous job. All we just ask, give to us is we should know what our challenges are. There were 246 trucksters, Mr. Weezer. Those were guys who swept Broadway and who swept Hollywood Boulevard and Wilshire. That got eliminated after Prop 13. And then bids came along, and bids do a significant success, because the public can't do it. We've got to realize bids are our partner in this here. I do want to harp on the NTA, because buses and its weight have destroyed Wilshire. I do want to criticize some lack of political decision on our BRT. Now we got it done, now we got to fix Wilshire, because I don't, Mr. Weston and I have been, that's very damaging to the vehicles. And I don't know, how much money a year do you know do we claim on pothole? And I met 10 or 15 people this year that hurt their tires. How many, do you know how much claims we pay out on potholes?
Well, typically, and of course, this is not an official number, this number, we would have to get it from our city attorney. But typically, we pay between, I'm going to say a million and $2 million related to street defects.
And lastly, I got, last year, we did something in the budget with sanitation, we took the trash receptacles, where there were volcanic and overflow, we transferred it to sanitation. They are approving that service. Members, I'm going to ask a very tough question, to take street cleaning from street services and put it with sanitation. The reason why I want to do that, if you have trash, and it's in the gutter, and it doesn't get picked up, it goes in the drain, and many drains are blocked, and it's sanitation's job to do it. More efficiency and a fight, I think, to discuss who does street cleaning. I will tell you, if we put it all in sanitation, they're following the trash. And if they follow the trash, it stays out of the river, stays out of the river, it stays out of the ocean, stays out of the ocean, it stays out of the tuna, stays out of the tuna, it stays out of those good sandwiches you get down at Pedro with the tuna. Thank you. Good job, Nazario and your team.
Mr. Labange, if I could ask you to please come take the com, and next on the queue is Mr. Ed Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. That's Mr. Salceda, right? First, I want to say thank you for your hard work. As you were talking about, speaking to your background, I think you and I started about the same time in the city, 23 years ago. But I do rise to support you, and I thank you for your hard work. As has been stated, there is a real passion there. And what is, even, it's just as challenging, is that the city could be likened to a city of cities. So the way certain streets are treated because of the number of people on that surface varies from place to place. Siah Park is a 70,000 people per square mile in Pico Union, Westlake, when the city averages 6,000. In Lincoln Heights, Highland Park, we're up to 25,000, 30,000. So the intensity and use of streets does vary from place to place. So I appreciate your creativity, because I know it's up to this body to assess how we look at resources and how we assess these formulas, and that's probably a whole other discussion. But the fact that we can be creative in addressing these pressures that are so intense in some of these pockets is due to the fact we have leadership like yourself. That can be responsive. For example, the hotspots, where routinely, we know that companies and entities from other places, whether it's from the city or the county, will come and literally dump on our streets. I mean, talking about truckloads of trash that's unloaded on our streets, on our sidewalks. Folks who are supposed to throw their bulky items in the city or county landfill, dump them on our sidewalks. And they think they can get away with it, and some do. But thanks to you and the coordination with our office, we've got these hotspots, and we can pick these items up. And I share this, colleagues, because that's the kind of productivity we've seen from Mr. Salceda. And for that, I thank you. And for that, I thank you. And I'm hoping that the lessons learned can continue to be creative as we feel this crunch in our budget. And I look forward to working with you and continued success.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Englander, please.
Mr. Salceda, can I call you Steve? No, never mind. Internal joke around the horseshoe. All joking aside, this is probably one of the most serious issues that I've had to deal with over the last 10 years that I've been working here in the building. It's the number one call that we get into our office every single day. It's the one issue that affects every single person, every single day in the city of Los Angeles. We don't need a street physician, and you're terrific. We need a miracle. It's embarrassing of where we're at and it's what I consider criminal. In fact, we're being sued for it all the time and we're paying out lawsuits after lawsuits for it all the time. And it's not just the streets, it's the sidewalks, it's the tree trimming, it's the inability for other general managers and the city to work together. I was at a recent meeting where Mr. Labange opened up the meetings that said he was frustrated, where he recently called to have a Christmas tree picked up after the holidays. And right next to the Christmas tree was a tree branch that fell from a tree. And he said he had to call two different departments because there were two different types of trees. One was a Christmas tree and one was a street tree. And they couldn't send the same truck out to pick them up while they were lying right next to each other. The city has, it's out of control. And it's not worth trying to explain to people. We've just got to fix it. It's really broken. And I'm looking to you to do that. I've seen great things with you in the last 12 months. The fact that you've been incredibly accessible, not to council offices, as general managers have been in the past, but to the general public. You've been out to neighborhood councils, meeting with them regularly. I know you were out speaking at one last week and I really appreciate that. What we really need is to get in and roll up our sleeves and look at what's going to work. We're at a $5 billion sinkhole right now in the condition of our infrastructure. That's unacceptable. People are paying too much in fees and taxes right now and the solution is not readily available. And looking at the Measure R funds as an example, it sounds great in concept, but then you get into the details. And the details you'd mentioned, yes, we do need to repave and it would make sense to borrow at a smaller amount. But then you get into repave, does that mean slurry or reconstruction? To borrow money for slurry over a 30-year proposal, that would only last about two years. Those are things that I think would be a grave mistake, passing the problem further on to our grandchildren. And this is a problem we've inherited. So I think the buck stops now and stops here. And so I want to hear the commitment on how we can work together. We haven't been kicking the can down the road. It's been kicking a snowball down the road and it keeps growing and growing. We have the highest cost, according to Texas study, in driving in a major city for road repair in the country, and it's embarrassing. And so what can we do now? What can we do immediately? We've studied and studied and studied at length, trying to fix, what can we come up with to fix these? We've tried to come up with the idea of passing back the liability to property owners. I think that's a grave mistake on sidewalks. What are some of the easy solutions that we can start looking at to bring back to this horseshoe?
That's an excellent, an excellent question, Councilmember. And trust me, I don't go to bed without thinking about the same things every night. And let me say first that what we currently have in the city of LA, in the Bureau of Street Services, it's something that is being duplicated right now by other municipalities. Make no mistake about it. The condition of the streets is the result of not investing enough money in our infrastructure. That's a condition. I feel very secure and you have my pledge and my commitment that every single dollar that we get, every single penny is well spent. Everything that we do is based on state-of-the-art technology. We use MicroPaver, which is the pavement management system utilized by the elite pavement management organizations in the world. We know with a high degree of accuracy what is the condition of each one of the 70,000 city blocks in the city of LA. We know exactly what kind of work, either maintenance or rehabilitation, is required right now, five years from now, 10 years from now. So we have developed strategic plans, five-year strategic plans, 10-year strategic plans, 20-year strategic plans to improve the condition of the network.
But we're 90 years behind. So this is what I ask for you. This is what I ask for you. I ask for a commitment from you and you've got my vote, if you can give me this commitment.
By all means.
That when it comes to the budget, and this is where the buck stops, it's at the budget, that you're not going to go along to get along, that you're not going to say, okay, thank you, can I have another? That when you're underfunded, you're going to come here and fight, that you're going to go to those neighborhood councils that you've been going out to and ask them to fight, that we can look at the budget and reprioritize and make sure that public safety, police, fire, infrastructure, paving our streets, fixing our sidewalks, trimming our trees, and planning, those are the core functions of local government, that you're here fighting for those services and not accepting further cuts.
Coach Rockney, you're overtime. Good job, Coach Rockney.
That's been my constant fight all the time and I will continue doing so.
Thank you, Coach Rockney. Very good. Okay. Good. And before I call Mr. Zine, it was Mr. McGovern, a citizen who made that complaint about the two trees on Hoover Street. Mr. Zine.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilman.
I'm going to take this in a little different direction. People are watching. They have no idea what the department does. Can you explain the primary responsibility of your department?
Yes, the Bureau of Street Services is primarily responsible for the maintenance and preservation of the majority of the public works elements within the public right-of-way, sidewalks, streets, and trees. And in addition, we are responsible for cleaning, maintaining the public roadways, and lastly, for enforcing over 110 and 20 municipal and state codes pertaining to the use of the public right-of-way.
And how many investigators you have for the enforcement?
Right now, we're down to 30 investigators.
30 for the whole city of Los Angeles?
For the whole city of Los Angeles.
Have you ever thought about teaming up building and safety inspectors with your inspectors and having a joint operation where they can share that responsibility?
Yes, we have. We have that right now. We have created an agreement with Building and Safety, CONAT, to have crossover authority, yes.
And what about the senior lead officers? As we know, that our senior lead officer, who's now a council member, they're integral in the part of the city and every district in the city has senior lead officers. Have there been any training with your folks and the senior lead officers to help resolve some of the issues?
Yes, as a matter of fact, our investigators receive post-training from LAPD and they are certified peace officers.
And then the new programs with the limited budget, we know we're going into another budget season and we know it's going to be tight, as it's been tight for the last few years. When you first joined the city, it wasn't as severe as it is, it's gone through peaks and valleys. What new programs do you believe you can implement with the current restrictions that are imposed on the budget?
Well, at this point, instead of requesting new programs that will require additional staff and will only bring a burden to the retirement system or the indirect that the city has to pay, I'm asking for increasing the dollar amounts in certain functions for which I think we have to increase the level of funding. For example, tree trimming. Our trees are growing in geometric exponential proportions and the more they grow, the bigger the liability. I think we need to invest more money on maintaining our tree infrastructure. Trees, by the way, are the only element of the infrastructure that increases its value with time. So we need to protect the streets.
So with the trees, the sidewalks, the streets, the gutters, the curbs, that's the responsibility that you have within the 4 million population of our great city. And hopefully, and I know your reputation for getting the job done, so I highly recommend you for that position, but the people who are paying the taxes say they're not getting the service they're paying for, whether it's the valley or other parts of the city. So we need to do more. There used to be an old philosophy of more with less. Well, we continue that philosophy, but then you come to the point that there's nothing else to do because we don't have anybody else to do it. How short are you in your department right now?
Well, we went from being a bureau that had approximately 1,700 employees five years ago to only having close to 1,000 right now.
So you lost 700 employees?
Approximately.
And you're not going to get those back?
Chances are that I'm not going to get those individuals back.
So the 1,000 that are still employed that are working?
Yes. One thing that we're doing right now, Councilman, as you mentioned, is we are totally deviating from the old way of doing business. Instead of having a static assignment of staff, now we have a more dynamic reassignment of functions. So basically, I created a new organizational chart for the Bureau of Street Services that allow me the flexibility to move people around, you know, throughout the different divisions within the bureau. That gives me the flexibility to serve you better and quicker.
Okay. I have no complaints. I know that we want some streets paved and I know we're putting some money forward to get that done in my district. But the fact is, we have to answer to the taxpayers, the people who are continually asking, our taxes aren't going down. If anything, they're going up in many areas and they expect to have that service in the streets. And we go from LA to Burbank, LA to Glendale, the surrounding communities, and we find out their streets are well paved, their trees are trimmed, and these smaller jurisdictions have a much better environment that we need to copy here and hopefully have it better for our people. Thank you. Congratulations. I would definitely vote for you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next will be Mr. Coretza. And members, I just want to remind you that at noon, we have three members scheduled to depart early. So with that said, Mr. Coretza, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I agree with what Mr. Englander said about infrastructure. I think the city, since I've been here, hasn't focused on it as a core function as much as I think we should. And I appreciate hearing your commitment to fight for that. I have to say, you've had this position and followed a terrific general manager who retired in the worst possible budget situation, and yet you actually got a lot done in terms of fixing up our streets. I actually have a group that rated me on my effectiveness as 5th District City Council Member. And initially, their worst criticism was the number of axle-destroying streets in the 5th District. I actually now get compliments on how much we've accomplished in this year in terms of repairing the worst streets in my district, around my district. So to do that in this budget shortfall, I think is quite an accomplishment and a good sign of things to come. I think that's the area that people are the most unhappy about is the condition of our streets and the fact that we're getting some of our worst streets fixed, I think, is a real plus. The one question I have for you on infrastructure is I know there are things that we could do in terms of altering our asphalt-producing plants, our asphalt recycling plants, that long-term would save us a lot of money, allow us to use our own asphalt more, and maybe even market it to other places. What are your plans in terms of attempting to bring those into the 21st century and let us make those one of the most effective plants in the country?
Yes, Councilman. The Bureau of Street Services owns two municipal asphalt plants. One was built in 1912, the other one was built in 1955. Obviously, they're old plants, but even so, these plants are capable of producing, in a combined fashion, approximately 600,000 tons per year. Every year, every day, the Bureau of Street Services produces asphalt mixes that contain 25% recycled asphalt. Although this is a great accomplishment, not a lot of cities can say that we recycle 25% of our recycle, of our asphalt material. There is a bigger opportunity here. New technologies allow other asphalt plants to recycle 50% of their new mixes. I'm in conversations right now with the CAO in trying to determine the way to secure the necessary funding to demolish one of the old asphalt plants and build a new state-of-the-art asphalt plant that will be capable of producing 50/50 mixes. That is going to save the city approximately $20 per ton. And I mentioned to you that city plants alone produce 600,000 per year, so 600,000 times 20, that's the kind of savings that we're going to have every year just by moving from an antiquated asphalt plant to a state-of-the-art asphalt plant.
So whatever we could do to move that efficiency forward, I don't know if you need the council to direct you or if that can be done without that, but I think that's one of the key, most obvious efficiencies for the city going forward, both from an environmental standpoint and from a fiscal standpoint. So I appreciate the fact that you're looking into that and hopefully we can move forward with it. And thank you for your great work and I look forward to working within the years ahead.
Thank you.
Mr. Roep, thank you. Mr. Coretza, Mr. Roep, Bill Rosendale.
Good morning. You're doing a great job. I mean, there's not been more questions asked of a general manager since I've been in this council. And I used to be chair of that committee. That's when I first came in, like Papa Joe over there is now chair of the committee. And the bottom line is, there's a lot to be done and you're not given a lot of resources. My folks thinks all their tax dollars goes to the city. It doesn't. Only 20 cents of their property tax do we get. Sidewalks is a big problem in my district. Streets are a big problem in my district. Potholes are a big problem in my district. And you've done a heck of a job with more, less, limited resources and all of that. First is, I want to compliment you. You're accessible to everybody. You do meet with people, even minor little issues on different blocks where I've had problems of people putting vegetation in without permission and how you interact with that. And bigger issues, you find a way to figure out what to prioritize and how not to. You're great. And so obviously, we should confirm you. Your thoughts about sidewalks? You know, I want to get all sidewalks fixed. And now we realize the citizenry is saying, hey, man, that sidewalk is busted because you, the city, put some dumb tree there that blew it apart. Now all of a sudden, I'm responsible for the sidewalk. They don't like that, obviously. And so we've had discussions about point of sale, which means when you sell a property, something goes into it. We really haven't gotten anywhere with that. You're helping me tremendously on the Westchester scape there, going in on Sepulveda. And I know the cooperation has been stellar and we're going to end up fixing that, thanks to Maxine Waters putting a million bucks into it. And thanks for the Howard Hughes project where we got 1.8 million out of them. We actually have money to do it. And this has been a mess for many years. I mean, it goes up like this, you can't even walk on that. Your thoughts, just with a visionary sense, of how do we deal with our sidewalk issue as a city?
Well, we have approximately 10,750 miles of sidewalk. No other city has more sidewalk than us. And approximately 4,500 miles of those 10,750 need to be replaced. That's a reality. Now, in terms of who's responsible for the sidewalk, this is a matter that is being discussed right now, as you correctly mentioned it, Councilmember Rosendale, is being discussed right now at Public Works Committee. It's a policy decision. Right now, we're at a point in which we are exploring four different options. We were instructed to come back with some recommendations, more information. I think the issue about the sidewalk is very critical, not only because it generates a lot of claims, approximately between $3 and $4 million per year, but also because it's a primary quality of life issue. I mean, I suffer every time that I see mothers taking their kids to elementary schools and fighting the sidewalk with their strollers. You know, it's difficult to see kids on their bikes try to get on the street because they're afraid of getting on the sidewalk. So for the same reason, I have a dedicated team that performs interim asphalt repairs as needed. I know that there are a lot of sidewalk that require more than just temps, what we call asphalt temps. But at this point, the Bureau of Street Services, as you well know, and for the last three years, we have not seen the funding to do what is called sidewalk reconstruction. So at this point, we count on the participation of the residents to let us know where the sidewalk repairs are needed so we can send our trucks right there to perform interim repairs and to ensure that the sidewalks are safe and passable. I think we are, we're moving forward. I think in the near future, we will have a new policy or the same policy, who knows? But at least we will have something solid now. I think at this point, there are a lot of options that we're exploring. I'm bringing my team, I'm meeting with, in the near future, I'm going to meet with members of different universities and we're going to try to come up with a holistic approach to this problem.
And just real quickly, I know we're running out of time. People have to leave. You know Measure R, the mayor's been talking about fast-forward some of that money so we can get our streets done and our sidewalks. We're also talking with Mike Fuer about Measure RB, so to speak, which would be additional here so we can do it all ourselves. You have an opinion on accelerating some of this work through Measure R, local return monies?
Well, right now, the Measure R team is putting together a more fiscally responsible, more sustainable program than the one that we presented to all of you before. I think we heard your concerns, we heard your points, and we went I think we heard your concerns, we heard your points, and we went back to the drawing table, and now we have a more, once again, sustainable, fiscally prudent Measure R program that we will be presenting to you in the near future.
Well, bless you for stepping up to the plate. You're a great guy and we look forward to your continued service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Soseda. You've done a wonderful job as an employee and also as the interim general manager for about a year now, and I want to thank you for your hard work. We have slowly sealed and improved more streets than we have in a very long time. But I think other than that, if we look at our services that we provide for this infrastructure, we have a long way to go, as been noted by my colleagues. We know how long it takes to trim our trees. We're on a 12-year cycle and how long that takes. In our alleys, we no longer have funding to redo our alleys. Our sidewalks, we no longer have money to do any of our sidewalks. So we are really in a time when we have to address these. I know that as a chair of the Public Works Committee in the last year and a half, getting a solution to our sidewalk problem has been a priority, and we narrowed down several solutions that you proposed for us from about 18, 20 to 11, and then we narrowed those down even to further. And I want to make clear right now, colleagues, the direction that we have given is that the adjacent property owner should not be responsible for fixing sidewalks when they've been uprooted by trees. And the department's coming back to Public Works Committee with more in-depth information on three or four solutions, one of those being a bond which Mr. Englander has proposed. Now, obviously, the committee and under the leadership of Mr. Buscagno could continue to direct in different areas, but that's where we are right now. And I would advise my colleagues, if you have a different opinion than the one we've asked Mr. Soseda to pursue, please let him know and please let Mr. Buscagno know because one of the things we didn't want to do is go down a path, ask our general manager to get so much information about one possible solution when it was off or not, if we weren't even going to take that up seriously. So that's where we are with sidewalks. I entrust that Mr. Buscagno would do a great job in leading this forward, but next to public safety and putting the lights on and making sure the water is running, our constituents are letting us know loud and clear that they want our streets fixed, they want our sidewalks fixed, and they want our trees trimmed in a timely manner, and we're not doing a very good job of that right now, other than what I've seen in street resurfacing. So thank you for your service. You can only do so much with the money we provide to you, but given these very difficult circumstances that we are in, I think you've been doing a great job with limited resources. But you need to help us make those tough decisions by providing us and get creative on what solutions we can come up with to get more financing for all these public infrastructure projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Weezer, Mr. Alicon.
I thought the president of the Public Works Commission did an outstanding introduction. I don't always, notwithstanding what people may think, I don't always agree with the president of the Public Works Commission, but in this case, I do. And I wasn't really going to speak, but I was concerned that the question posed by Mr. Englander was not answered. I don't want you to answer it. I don't think you should answer it, quite frankly. That when we, we should not challenge general managers. Of course, you're going to fight for your budget, but it's a negotiated process. And I want to point out to all my colleagues and people who watch that sort of challenge that we just cut your department. We just cut the services with the mid-year report and all of us voted for it. So I think it's not, it's not, I don't think I would put you in the position to ask you to fight for the department, because I know you've been fighting for the department. And it's not as if you're going into a new position, you're merely getting the title because you've been the general manager of the street services and you've been doing a damn good job. So I know that you fight for, to continue services. And, you know, just for the record, you know, in our fiscal year budget, we just, mid-year budget, we just deleted $1.3 million in the street services. And Mr. Nizario had to figure out how to accomplish that. And I know it's not something you relish. You'd rather add more services to the city, there's no question about it. So I just wanted to point that out. And I strongly suggest you don't answer questions like that. The times change, and depending on the circumstances, sometimes you fight to increase your budget and sometimes you have to work with administration to reduce your budget. But you can't predict the future. In this case, we know that we have tight budgets. The chances are that you'll be asked again by the CAO and the mayor to reduce your services and you'll be, you know, I know you'll fight for those services. And if anybody doesn't vote for the budget, it might be me, because I think I've voted against the budget more than anybody else in the time I've been here. And so I just think that you should do the best you can in that regard, just as you've been doing in the acting position of general manager.
Thank you, Councilman, and that's my pleasure to all of you. I will always do my best.
Okay, Mr. Alicon, are you trying or attempting to break former State Senator Diane Watson's record where related to voting against budgets?
Pointing that out, I will do the research and find out whether that's something I should try to attempt.
Mr. Labange for 15 seconds, Mr. Labange.
Not only a new asphalt plant, members, let's buy a concrete plant and really go 50/50. If we develop the concrete, we can provide it. Also strengthen Public Works. Senior leads are great, Public Works and the Public Work Inspector, strengthen them and make it not against the law to sweep in front of your own house or clean your own drain. Thank you, Mr. Weston.
Mr. Labange, that was 14 and a half seconds. You did good. Mr. Zuma Dogg and Matt Dowd are...
Sorry, I'm here.
Oh, but I thought... I've been informed, we've already had a hearing, but I'm going to afford you the opportunity to speak.
Yes, we're talking Bureau of Street Services, and you know, this guy, you know, it sounds like he's got all the answers, sounds like all the monitoring, and he can tell exactly where all the problems are over the next five, 15, and 20 years. What I would like the commissioner to do is an investigation into where's the money? What happened to the money? I know the money has been provided to the city. Now, things like the trash is piling up unbelievably. Wait, wait, we talked about the problems. The money isn't being spent. What the city does, they take in the tax money for all these things, but instead of recycling it and spending it to fix the problem, they put it into the bank and they subvert. Third-party flips, the money disappears. We got the FBI investigating City Hall, and I think it is the Bureau of Street Services as well. It's a racket. But let me tell you something, what I'd like this guy specifically, since I'm right here, Bill Rosendahl could testify that I am the street services deputy in that department and as somebody that the city is cracking down at Venice Beach for being one inch over the line, I would like a notice to go out to all businesses that the city sidewalks are not to do your retail business. You're not allowed to set up like Flake on Rose. They have their, they sit there and run a restaurant on the sidewalks and then you can't even walk down the street. So that's my pet peeve issue, but the number one thing is, what happened to the money to provide the services? I'll tell you what happened. It was provided to council and then they subverted it through all this nonprofit stuff and through the giving it this way and that way, third-party transactions. Now we got nothing. We got nothing. If you care about the city, get the hell out. That's the only thing you could do. The money was pilfered, it was stolen, and now the city cannot provide basic services.
Thank you. Next is Matt Dowd.
All right, thank you. Yeah, great issue this one, as you can see. And let me point out, I think Tom Labange and Mitch Englander had the best mayoral campaign speeches, if they were viewed in that regard, compared to Eric Garcetti, which was very lame and weak. So I think he should drop out of the mayoral campaign. Let's get someone with some balls in there who knows how to do it.
Let's speak to the item, Mr. Dowd.
Thank you. That's all it's, big issue. No, I'm serious, because that's what it sounds like. It's all this talk, oh, you know, let's do this and let's do that. But I like this guy, Soseda. You know, he sounds like he's got a handle on it, and this is, here's my problem. First of all, get a note and a pen out. Mr. Commissioner, I want to give you the addresses of some streets that need some asphalt repair. At Venice Beach, in between Washington and Venice Boulevard and between Speedway and Pacific Avenue, there's all those little alleyways. Now, we get a lot of traffic in there in the summer. Everyone goes to Venice Beach in the summer. All those little alleyways get all this traffic and the streets are shot and they need asphalt repair. I don't want to be going to the LA Weekly to get my asphalt, okay? Because I just got the LA Weekly with Newt on it and that's all I see all through the back of it. So anyway, here's another problem too. This all ties into the pension money, the loss of the city funds. See what happens, folks?
Let's stay on the commissioner, Matthew.
From the proper money to fix the freaking streets. Now let me make my point. I don't want to be interfered with down here.
Listen, Matt, listen, 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 Matt. We've been accommodating. I asked you to stay on topic, okay? Stay on topic.
I want to talk about how the money gets taken out of the general fund to pay back all the pension money. That's why there's no money to repair the streets. That's on topic.
Thank you. Anyway, Nizario, I've got a feeling that we will be congratulating you in a few minutes. Now let's, look, please don't disrupt the meeting. Please don't disrupt the meeting, which is occurring now. Anyway, I think we'll be thanking you in a few seconds. I do want to echo the comments of the other members. You've been phenomenal and excellent individual to work for. So with that said, can we please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
12 ayes.
The ayes have it. Fourth with, Madam Clerk, that should bring us to items one and two, correct?
Yes, call special for cards.
Okay, item, item one was called special by, we have a public comment card from Mr.
Item one, I am against it. Thank you.
Okay, now I have Mr. Zuma Dogg, Superman, and Mr. Norojanian.
Yes, Sean Murphy's a genius. He's against it and so am I. Let's talk about it. We're talking about the Department of Building and Safety and liens. Oh, I've spoken about liens here before, and I'd like to say regarding this specific item, regarding nearly $20,000 in a lien assessment for barricading of opening and cleaning, I'm here to say I would suggest a no vote. The council members do not want to be complicit because the building and safety, and by the way, it's very chit-chatting because there's lots of pictures being taken with the new guy talking to Labange, and I can't concentrate. So if I could have quiet in chambers, because we're talking about the FBI and the fact that building and safety is being investigated over liens, because what happens is, you got a bunch of Rico racketeering mafia mob cahoots racket thugs that are running the city. And what happens is bribes, and what happens is the city, oh, here's why you should say no. It's been brought to my attention, which means it's been brought to the FBI's attention last week, that the city is having people instructing the people in the lien programs how to stay in the reap. That's right, the city benefits when these liens are assessed. So the city is having people instruct the tenants how to damage properties so this could be a fake lien. Also, the city posts erroneous liens because it's a corrupt mafioso organization and they walk up and go, boom, we're putting this lien on your house. Excuse me, it's, I'm not even the owner that this lien says. Well, sorry, it's been passed down the line. Oh, you have a hearing. Oh, you missed a hearing because we sent it late to you. And before you know it, you lose the property. Fines are being assessed, properties are being seized. Vote no, the FBI is investigating.
Thank you. If we could have Superman and Mr. Norojanian please come forward.
Yeah, 20,000, nearly 20,000, 19,000 and change for this one. Yeah, I hope the FBI is investigating all these things. You know, I'm tired of the, you know, just if you're going to violate the rules on the little things, then it's been proven, the scientific tests that have just come out today, the richer you are, the more powerful you are, the more likely you are to break the rules. And that's a proven fact. So that's why I'm the good guy, because I got no power. I got, I don't have much. I got a couple of guitars, you know? So I'm glad this is not my property, whoever it is of 53, 56 Southwest Boulevard. I mean, you got, you ran up $19,000 of costs to barricade the openings, cleaning and fencing. I mean, what happens if the person doesn't have the 19,000 of liquidity to pay this? So that's why there's investigations into these things. We keep seeing them. And here's the other thing I don't like, okay? I think you should shut down the San Pedro public comment thing because, see, I'm here talking about this. I talk about some of these things and I'll wait here and I'll spend my time...
Mr. President, he's not talking about this item.
Please let him finish. Matt, just wrap it up, finish your point.
All right. I will spend my time, that I could be doing other things, to wait here and talk about some of these important things, just like the street service thing, but why is there nobody else coming up here to talk about it? So the street service is not as bad as you think, because clearly no one cares about it except us.
Mr. Norojanian.
Respectable City Council members, DFL Angelinas, I actually endorse this resolution number one that actually requires consideration of appeals or objections to Department Building and Safety report and confirmation of lien to cover the cost of balance of all operations, cleaning and fencing of a lot at 53, 56 Southwest Boulevard. Actually, well, I believe that unlike, let's say, Zuma Dogg, I don't believe that there was any problem with it, it's actually, it's lien or something being corrupt in any way. But so, because there were no reports from mass media at least about. But well, actually, what I believe that was liens with report, actually, report of the Department of Building and Safety should become public because it's against a lot of kind of secret politics, you know? And I believe it's unfair, very unfair to leave those taxpayers in the darkness of ignorance and not give them information about what report includes. That report should include also that information, not only about the amount of lien, but kind of substitution. Why should actually the city government pay for that lien? Why should the owner of that building, you know, pay for all those barricading of openings, cleaning, and fencing of a lot? It's actually, we shouldn't have, in the business of making, you know, those building owners, you know, happy by paying their own expenses, when they should go out and pay for those fencing and building, cleaning, and fencing and openings, you know, from their own pocket. The city, and we shouldn't mistake a city pocket from a pocket of those owners of those buildings. If you do, I believe that this attorney is going to indict, prosecute you for embezzling of public funds.
Thank you. So on this item, there's no one in the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
So I believe that brings us to item two, that was held by cards as well.
Yes, excuse me, Mr. President, before we do item two, for item number three, Mr. Soseda's salary has been set at $7,121.60 biweekly.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, on public comment, I do have Zuma Dogg and I have Batman, and if Batman is Matt, you have one minute left, and Mr. Norojanian as well. So Zuma Dogg and Batman have one minute left. Go ahead, Mr. Dog.
Thank you, and please that the council could pay attention, because as you know... Thank you, and please, if the council could pay attention, because as you know, after six years, I love you all so much, very much, I care about you, maybe it's Stockholm syndrome, but I don't want you to vote yes on something and end up being complicit, and then you're on the hook, because the Building and Safety Department is under FBI investigation for this very issue. This is a lien that's been assessed. Now, what's happening is you have inspectors that just walk up to your house one day or your building and go, hey, we don't like this, hey, we don't like that, hey, you got to do this, you got to do that, hey, give me a bribe, you know, hey, I run with the mafioso organized crime crew, see The Sopranos, and so you're going to, and then before you know it, you can't get yourself off the meat hook of the organized mafioso crime ring that's running this city, and then you lose your property. So I'm here to say that penalties are being assessed illegally, and then properties are being seized illegally, and if you vote yes, you are complicit.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Batman, you have one minute, and if you can come on up, Mr. Norojanian, because you're up next.
All right, so yeah, the racketeering continues. It all starts in the city attorney's office, of course, they're the ones who apparently run the city. From all I've seen from the councils, the attorneys tell you all what to do, but it should be the other way around. Now, here's my new campaign, we got to shut down the San Pedro remote thing, use that money to cover some costs in the city, no one ever goes there, move it to the west side so all the people on the west side can actually have a say.
Bring it back around, Matt, so that these liens might not be as important, but let's stay on the item.
I'm just trying to bother the mayoral candidate, because I know he-
But that's not on the item.
He was a control freak when he was up there, and now it's out of his control, I love it. Thank you.
Mr. Norojanian.
Respectable City Council members, dear fellow Angelinas, actually, I endorse Resolution Number Two, which actually represents continued consideration of hearing product relative to Department of Building and Safety report and confirmation of lien against property situated at 11264 North Bat Avenue. Well, actually, well, actually, if there were any, but I don't know, no information was included about if there were any violation of code violations or not, you know? Well, actually, as there were any violations, actually, city officials should actually give fines from violators, you know, and or violation of city code, you know, and in order to restore justice to the system, you know? And actually, we said, Department of Building and Safety to deposit, to amount of eight the balance of sheet account, 2,200, any payment received against this lien in the amount of $320 of reference property. Well, actually, yeah, but it looks like the city of Los Angeles receives a significant amount of money from the owners of that property, in first place. But anyway, if actually, city government wants to actually do business at the expense of city taxpayers, not expense of those building owners, it's a big mistake, it's a grave mistake, it's reactionary politics, and I believe it, we should shut down serious fees if we mention any code violations, and replenish city revenue by giving all those fees in courts, you know, unnecessary courts, you know, unnecessary bills, you know, for violations, all city code violations, because it makes things gross, it makes crime rate go up, and loses dignity to the system, and people won't like, you know, paying their taxes, if they're paying their rent as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, Madam Clerk, it's my understanding that no vote is necessary on this item. This item has been requested that it be received and filed, correct?
Correct, yes, it was received and filed previously.
All right, so that's what we will do. Next item of business.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Consider them posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Okay, Members, announcements. Mr. Labange.
Proud to know that Artist was awarded the Best Picture of the Year. The Artist was the only one of nine Academy Award films that were actually filmed in Los Angeles and Hollywood, and it portrayed this island. It is a great love story. If you haven't seen it, who would think at this time and age Detective Sergeant Edo, who would think that a black and white picture, a silent picture would be the best picture of the work, but it's the Artist that we salute them and congratulate them.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Any more announcements? Any more announcements? Okay, Members, let's rise, oh, Mr. Garcetti. Oh, okay, let's rise for adjourned motions, if I can get everybody to please rise in the council. Bill, we need you to stand up for adjourned motions. Johnny, get it going, Johnny, come on now. We will start out with Mr. Garcetti.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmembers, I ask that we adjourn today a memory of Luigi D'Alponte, who passed away on February 23, 2012, in Glendale, California. Luigi was born in Italy on December 19, 1926. He was very involved in northeast Los Angeles and the Glassell Park community, where an Italian-American community has existed there for decades. He was a contributor to all his community for many, many years. He would be missed by all who knew him. Services will be held February 29, 2012, at St. Bernard Church at 2516 West Avenue 33, and the viewing will be from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. In lieu of flowers, the family respectfully requests that donations be made to the St. Bernard School Foundation. He's survived by his wife Lena, his daughters Albina and Gina, his grandchildren Aaron, Kevin, Julia, and Mark, and his siblings Maria Bart and Pia Varney, and many, many nieces and nephews. Luigi D'Alponte, may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, colleagues, I rise to adjourn in memory of Agnes E. Williams of San Pedro. Agnes was born on December 9, 1927, in Panama, and passed away peacefully on February 18, 2012, in San Pedro with her daughter by her side. Agnes is survived by three children, Cecilia, Luis, and Alonso, seven grandchildren, eight great-grandchildren, and three older siblings. Ms. Williams immigrated to New York in 1974 and moved to San Pedro in 1982. She worked for the San Pedro Peninsula Hospital Housekeeping Department until she retired in 1992. Agnes E. Williams, may she rest in peace. Thank you.
Any more adjourned motions, Members? And with that said, this council meeting is adjourned. Thank you.